All right, so now being 6 o'clock, I'll call the Monday, July 24th meeting of the Board of Selectment to Order. Mark is not with us tonight, so it's just John and I. We've got Tara, the town clerk, has asked for a little bit of time at the start of the meeting to talk about a change in the way that we are posting...
Noticing.
Notifying of meetings. So Tara, do you want to come? I don't know where the...
I'll just go right here.
Well, do you want to just come and grab your mic?
Sure.
Grab your mic. I'll have that one little one right there.
This?
Yeah.
Okay. So at the May Town Meeting, the town meeting adopted to... or voted to adopt the alternative method of posting meeting notices. And it includes posting to the website, which we do anyways daily. But this now meets the statute that it's available to all residents and boards and committees 24/7. So we're going... I'm sending a memo to all the boards and committees telling them that we're eliminating the outside posting box. We won't be giving copies to anybody unless it's requested. If they send us the notice of meeting electronically, we will reply by return email and confirm with them that their meeting has been posted. They can't... Anybody can go on the website and get a copy for themselves, and there's a timestamp on the website as well. So we're eliminating three steps in our office. And that was voted on at Town Meeting. So memo is going out today.
Working well so far?
We've been doing it, but we didn't make it official. I wasn't comfortable for the last... Until we got the website really up and running and making sure that people were checking it. So it seems like most of the residents and boards and committees are accessing the information on the website that we pay for anyways.
That's terrific.
So now, at this last Town Meeting, I felt comfortable with using it as the alternate method. And we do it daily, and we're to the point where we have it part of our daily procedure. So if it's close in timing to the 2:00 regular business hour that we close and it's beyond the 48-hour mandatory posting time, then we may possibly wait till the next morning to post it. But we try not to. So it's at least 48 hours.
Terrific.
Which is part of the open meeting law guides.
Okay. Thanks Tara.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, John? Are you ready just to jump in?
Jump in.
Okay. All right, updates and discussions. Community paradigm, executive search for town administrator follow-up. We met with Bernie Tuesday? Was it Tuesday night or Wednesday?
Yes, Tuesday.
Tuesday. And we were able to negotiate agreeable terms, and we discussed the scope of the agreement. And then we got started with discussing what we thought the needs were and kind of putting together a game plan. Do you have anything you wanted to report on that?
Yeah. So Bernie has come back with some dates that he would like to set up for talking to people in Plimpton.
Terrific.
So we need to figure out who he should be talking to.
Okay.
Okay. You know, July 26th doesn't work, obviously. But starting with August 1st on... Why don't I send you a list of people?
Perfect.
And then, and I'll send Mark, and we can call out who we think or add to it. And then I'll go back to him with a list of, you know... I think we circulated to those people and say when you were available. He wants roughly a half an hour, he thinks.
Okay.
Okay. So if we could do it like 3 or 4 in a block, so we don't waste his time.
Sure. All right, that makes sense. It's nice that things are moving so quickly.
Yeah, yeah, this is good. And he also, as you'll see on the memo, he wrote what we should be sending out.
Oh.
Which makes it more easy.
Nice. Okay, perfect. All right.
I'll agree if you haven't seen that, but...
Perfect. So you'll work on the list, and then we'll just go from there.
Yeah.
Will any Plimpton people, are you referring to residents or do you want the boards and committees?
A mixture of both. So we'll probably have, for instance, we've talked about Colleen Thompson and Susan Ossoff because they just got off. They have a lot of experience. Definitely we'd want to include them in the group.
Mm-hmm.
We wanted to talk to people inside here, department heads. And then I would think there's probably some other parts of the community we want to touch on.
Sure. Perfect. All right, Cisco abatement filing. I don't think we've heard anything. We requested last week that she include Copan Page and Rich Bowen.
Yes, I did send a note to Rich Bowen just saying, you know, that we had suggested his name, and hopefully she'll be talking to him. It's really their call still. And I assume she'll want to go to KP anyways, so...
I gave her the contacts at KP Law and Rich Bowen to contact to send out... I'm not sure if it was an RFP or whatever her... Whatever she sent to get her proposals. So hopefully she took care of that.
I know there was a lot going on.
Okay.
Monday's last day was Thursday.
Okay.
There were some personal things at the office, and she left again early today for...
Okay.
None of that.
Well, I can follow up with her.
Okay.
I know where we are with the process for next week.
Do you want to CC me on that?
Absolutely.
Then I can...
All right, fire an EMS, hire consultant, and fire clerk applications.
I understand we've gotten four applications.
Terrific.
But I haven't had a chance to talk directly to the chief, so I'm trying to catch up with him. The consultants, I wanted to ask you about that. Do we want to do, say, two at our next meeting and two the meeting after?
That sounds perfect.
Okay. Two and two, we'll split them apart, so one at 6, one at 8, something like that.
That sounds great. Yeah, one at the beginning and one at the end. That sounds perfect.
Okay, I'll set that up.
Okay.
There was a question that the chief had, when he could start. Excuse me. Interviewing and how long it had to be posted for. Town's office did look up for me to see if there was anything in the clerks as far as how long a job has to be posted. Sometimes have it in their bylaws.
We don't.
We do not.
No.
So kind of the general thing was two weeks.
Two weeks.
And then I told him to speak to John.
Perfect.
But he had like four people.
So we've already got a weekend... It was in the paper last week, too.
Terrific.
Yeah. So we should be ready this time. We're going to have the chief obviously talk to Barbara, the accountant, and myself.
Okay.
And if the chief wants somebody else, that's his prerogative.
Okay. Sounds like a good committee to go through these.
Yeah, just to make sure we cover the bases of what we're trying to do.
Okay. So you guys will act as the screening committee?
Yeah, effectively.
Okay, perfect. That sounds great. (cough) Excuse me. Okay. On to solar. I don't think we've got any updates. I haven't seen any proposals. I don't think there was anything in the correspondence.
No, I didn't see anything, so...
Okay, so we'll just hold that for next week.
Right.
Rocky Harvest after permit hours complaint follow-up. We had, when we met with KP Law, we briefly discussed some complaints that we've received. Greg suggested that we draft a letter to send to Mr. Rose, who is the owner of the water withdrawal, Rocky Harvest, and then a letter to the Butters.[534.12][534.12](cough) Excuse me, I took on my throat. So I drafted letters, and he tweaked them. And I wanted all three of us to sign it. I just thought it was more impactful if we did that.
Okay.
So do you... Were you happy with both of the letters? I think you reviewed them and said they looked good.
Yeah, I... Were the two? I thought I only saw one.
Okay, there's one to the Butters, and then there's one to... Ooh!
These are the two to the Butters.
Oh, these are both to the Butters? Okay, so we must have already mailed the one to...
Yes, and then this was the one that followed that he had wanted. I thought the same thing, and I was going...
Okay.
And there's two copies, so one will go to each of the individuals listed on them.
Okay, the dead ones and the hands.
I think this is good.
Okay. So the gist of the letter is that we want them to contact us with any reports of violations so that we can create a law and keep track of this, and as much evidence as they provide us would be helpful. So do we want to hold this until Mark gets back?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. All right, thank you. All right, then we've got Town House Communication meeting follow-up on memo sent to all departments.
How many people have replied?
Two.
So far, it's still early.
Ken Thompson replied. It went out Thursday.
Oh, okay, okay.
It went to the distribution list, so I'm thinking maybe they'll meet this weekend to discuss.
Okay.
Maureen Springer replied. Ken Thompson replied, and Maureen wanted to know if you wanted someone from the school, a representative from the school.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. This really isn't that type of a meeting. This is more, if you've got issues, we want you to come in and talk about it. But we're not just going to kind of sit and talk about if things... Everything's going fine.
Yeah.
So now we spawn now.
Yeah, respond now. If we find after this meeting that maybe we needed someone, we'll do it the next time.
Yeah, absolutely.
I did send a note off to Rich Bowen, just making sure. It's in his calendar, so we're all set.
Terrific. Okay, so next is correspondence.
Do you want to do a cursory?
Oh, perfect. Here's the letters for the... Okay, so first item is the dog bite report that Kathy Ferguson sent to him, to Mr. Egan, that basically said that, you know, Frank had seen the dogs, and I think they included a copy of Frank's report that, in his opinion, the dogs were in good health. And then...
Okay.
The woman who is the family childcare licenser for the... At the address involved would like a copy of all information we have regarding the incident. She spoke to Frank Bush to request the reports, and he suggested I contact your office. So those are all public records.
Freedom of information, sure.
We can't send those to her, so I'm just maybe scanning in an email.
Okay. And then I think if you had wanted anything more from Kathy?
I think that was... Yeah, I think this is fine. I mean, that's basically...
Just to let them know.
We just wanted to know that the dogs are in good health and that there's no incident of rabies, so he doesn't need to see rabies treatment.
And then I will also let Board of Health know of the request of the...
We'll have to put this...
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, so from Joy Marble, COA Director, subject refrigerator and cabinet. This is a request of a full-size refrigerator and shelving put in the break room for use by the COA for temporary storage of perishable foods. This fridge may also be useful for other town employees. Thank you for your consideration of the met.
Do we have a refrigerator in the break room?
We have a little one that's for us. She's getting one donated.
Oh, perfect.
Did she not?
No, she didn't say that.
This... The cabinet that's in there right now was donated, and they set it up. The people that came in, and she said she was going to put the breads and things. Not that certain, but it would hold things like that.
Okay.
And then she had a refrigerator with a freezer top. They are getting donations, and every month she will be distributing to the residents in town.
That's terrific.
If anybody's interested, please contact her. They had all sorts of things, like chickens.
Oh, how nice.
It was really, really good.
So is her intent to kind of do a food pantry here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So it was in that heat last week. She was in our car. They were all coming. There was a bunch of them taking packages and delivering them to residents.
Terrific.
We caught somebody in the town house last week, and we gave them some, and so they signed up. It was really, really nice.
Oh, that's terrific.
It's... She made us arrange where we could go in there. I said, why don't you write something?
Perfect.
Things have been...
So it's a donate, a donation?
Donation.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so from Wendy Jones from Duxbury, a letter to the Board of Assessors. We're copied in on this. Please accept this as official notice of my resignation. So it looks like she's been here over four years. Her last day was Thursday, and she was happy to meet at their convenes to discuss the transition of duties to her successor. So with regret, I'll accept Wendy Jones' resignation as the administrative assistant and thank her for her service.
Sorry to see you, girl.
To the town. All right, so...
Is that a vote?
I don't think we need a vote.
No, I don't think we need a vote. We just...
We just accept the win.
Accept it. All right, so this is the... A copy of the letter that we're sending to Ed Rose from us about notifying him of this second complaint. So this is the one I think that you saw, John. So we just need to sign that and get that mailed off, get out.
Does that leave one signature on that one?
Nope, that's all three.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
I guess we'll hold for Mark.
Yeah, we can hold that one for Mark, too. Okay, we've got a couple of requests for road cuts to install new gas service. The first one is 118 Main Street. Isn't that where they did the renovation?
Yeah, I believe it is, yeah.
So they're looking for a 4x6 road cut, and this has been approved by Jim Olkady. Then we've got install new gas service.
At 118.
At 118, so, okay.
I don't think that's that one.
118 Main.
118.
Yeah, one says "hold," but they're both road cuts and actually the same dig save number, so I think it's...
You can take the "hold up." I put "hold" on that.
Okay. To make sure Jim was okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And then I mark it.
Okay. So we just need to make a motion to authorize Columbia Gas. So I'll make a motion that we authorize Columbia Gas to do a road cut at 118 Main Street for the installation of new gas service, and this has been approved by Jim Olkady.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so last item...
Oh, I... Excuse me, I can tell you exactly where this is now, Jim Whitten. This is down the house that's right before Wind Road, that's being put back on that corner.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, so this isn't, okay, the house we thought it was. Okay.
181.
Okay. Oh, you're right. I think that's... Was it 181 or 188? Okay. All right, so from the Plimpton Halifax Express, last Friday, Plimpton Selectmen projector proposals, and that was awfully nice of Steve Hello to come and give us such a thorough Then we did a... We discussed the dog complaint, and... Okay, there's one more thing. No, maybe that was a...
I think the fire clerk ad is in here. Right... Yeah, on that page.
Town Plimpton... Okay, the senior assessors clerk is in here, as well as the clerk to the fire chief. And is there a date on this, when they're supposed to have... So you've already got four applications, but it hasn't closed yet, right?
No, no.
So one more week?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So anyone who's interested in applying, there is a job description of the clerk to the fire chief.
And also the assessors.
And also the Town Plimpton Assessor Senior Clerk. Looks like that one is 23 hours per week, and the fire is 15.
Yeah. A correction on the assessors now, I think of it. Wendy Jones was a administrative assistant, and I think Deborah Stew talked to Barbara, and Barbara pointed out that. So I think she's going to repost it so that it would be at a higher grade.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll start the... It's the assessors' call, but if they do it, then we'll start the two-week clock again.
Terrific, okay. That makes sense. All right, well, here was the rest of it. And then we just talked about appointments, how important it is for people to come in. And the assistant assessor gave us an update on what was happening with Cisco and the evaluation. All right, so I think that was pretty much it for Plimpton. Little article about mosquito season, the outlook. I did not get a chance to read them, and something about Soul Homestead. So quite a bit of different activities going on. A nice article about Halifax, Fire Department helps rescue coacid victim. What was that about?
I didn't see that, that one. That one wasn't one that I wrote. I get my paper a couple days late since I live in Wemben.
Okay.
So once I get it, I'll take a look at it.
All right, yeah, I should read the article, too. I just kind of looked at ours. Interesting.
I think it was in Coacid, so...
Oh, in Coacid, they responded?
But one of the...
Okay. All right, so that's it for correspondence. Do we have anything else?
Yeah, under the board calls.
Okay. So first one, financial management. We're still waiting for Monica Lamboy to provide us with a final draft of our CIP plan, the financial policies. It's all... It's going to be a nice document that she's putting together for us, so we should have that any day. Anything under public safety?
No, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. All right, technology?
Okay, yeah. Do you have something?
They're going to have a meeting this week. Their meeting last week was Ken.
Okay, so public safety will meet this week? Are they posted?
Yeah.
I'm sure they are.
Yeah.
Okay, what is it, Wednesday? Isn't it usually Wednesday at like 6:00 or 7:00?
7:26.
Okay, 7:26, probably 7:00 p.m.?
Yeah, every Wednesday.
Okay.
6:00.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of things on technology. Mike Rodriguez was in this morning, so Tara and I met with him. Basically on exchange first. Tara, we had a list of all the... He gave us a list of all the people who have exchange or town addresses, email addresses. Tara went through them and showed which ones have been still using personal verses at. Under the license that we have, we have the use of up to 50. Presently, there's 40 on there. It looks like we'll probably eliminate some, either they're no longer on boards and commissions or no longer working for the town. So maybe 35. So we talked about, do we put everybody who's on a board or commission on the exchange? Because that would probably add somewhere between 60 and 100 names. It costs $69 as a one-time fee for each name.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Now, we've been paying on a monthly basis, the old way, $7 a month, every month. So you quickly recover the 69 by doing this. So what we decided to do, Tara's going to make up... She has a list of all the boards and commissions and who they are. And we're thinking for the small boards, like Agricultural Commission, that we will just have a generic chairperson of the Agricultural Commission. And then we'll also have a clerk of the Agricultural Commission. Now, if one person is doing both, we'll only have one email address, so 116, I should have that. For some of the larger boards, like ourselves, Board of Health, if they want to have all three members or all five members, then that's their call.
Okay.
Okay? So we... I guess I missed it when I thought we were getting 100 licenses rather than 50. We have in the package that we submitted for our grant application the 50 priced out. There's still money in the grant left over because we're only putting in the projection. Everything else, the exchange server, et cetera, was approved through the articles in Town Meeting. So I'll have Barbara monitor it so that, once we know how many we're going to have in total, which will probably be under, I'm assuming it might cost us another $3,000.
Okay.
That'll come out of the grant money that we are given by the state, and that's it. It's done.
Okay. Well, so it was for that purpose.
Exactly.
It's a little bit more than we had budgeted, but it's still... He said it wasn't a problem if it was within the scope of the original...
And I ran it by Barbara, too, and she's fine with it.
Perfect.
As a piece of that, though, Mike Rodriguez showed me... We have two servers in-house now. We have the new exchange server, and then we have the general server, which is where everything resides. It's in the assessors' office.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the wires just stick out of the wall. I mean, visually, it's a mess.
Okay.
It works. Everything's there. Mike knows how it's all set up. But I do think we have to start thinking about longer term, when the police move over, we've got to straighten that out as part of our overall, you know, what do we do with all the stuff we free up? And who should be moving there? You know, should we move the assessors? But I think we don't... At least my belief right now is, we wouldn't want to rewire another room. There's just too much wiring. So we want to stick with what we've got, but we ought to somehow have it closeted off, or, you know, and also secure.
Right.
Beyond just the assessors' door.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was one of the other things that fell out of that. And they won't move forward with the protection of these staff.
Terrific. Okay. All right, grants. We... I shared the email that we had received from Heidi. She gave us a couple of different options, whether we wanted to have a student or if we wanted to participate in the class ourselves. Do you want to pursue this? Do you want to hold off till we get the town administrator on board?
Well, I think we should pursue it before then.
Okay.
Yeah.
What are you aiming towards, the students?
Yeah, but I really wonder if we can get her to come in, so just...
All right.
Much like Steve Hello took us through...
Yeah, see if we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll see if Heidi, if we can schedule a time that's convenient for her to come in and talk to us about her program.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right, and then anything on volunteerism?
No, we're...
Okay.[1641.72] Okay. Well, all I have on volunteerism is the Plimpton Housing Production Plan Committee met last week. And Jen McDonald, who was involved with renovating the home on Main Street with the...
Yeah, Jen.
Yeah, with the red door, came in. I'm not sure if it's her business partner came in, too. They were a wealth of information about trends that they see in town with, and it was very different from what we thought the trend was. We thought it was, you know, mostly senior housing for a, you know, area of focus. But she said there are a lot of people who are looking to come in, looking for homes with two and three bedrooms to set down some roots and with kids and, you know, raise their children here. So they'd be looking for starter homes for young people, too. So it was very interesting, a lot of good information, so we're still working on that. But that was awfully good of them to come in and volunteer their time to tell us what the housing trends were.
You're a real asset to the town, I mean, not...
Oh, my gosh.
What they're doing with these houses is wonderful for the town.
It certainly is. And like I said, they just had so many really interesting ideas that we're going to pursue and see if we can incorporate those into the plan.
Great.
Okay, so next is minutes. I had, did you get a chance to read Breeze Minutes?
I saw the ones that just came out. Those are the ones we're talking about?
Yeah, those are the ones you're talking about.
Yeah, I thought they were well...
Yeah, I thought they looked good, too. There was a couple of suggestions that I had. They were minor.
Yeah, I always lose this stuff. It's on the list somewhere.
Did we need an executive session prior to that meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think so either. So I would just say, I just started with, called the meeting to order at 6:00 or 5:00. Because I don't think...
Did I delete one thing and not take out the rest of it?
Yeah, yeah. So I would just say that I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And then there was in correspondence that Mark had received congratulations, and I would say on his election.
Okay.
To Selectmen from KP Law. But everything else looked great to me.
Yeah, I had no problem with it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, because I went from one I deleted, I took the top one.
Yep, no worries. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from July 17th as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, and then we had the minutes from 7:18 with our meeting.
Oh, with Bernie?
With Bernie. I don't remember seeing those.
Yeah, I've seen them, too.
Oh, you wrote those?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I did. I was thinking that they were Mark. I'm like, I never saw anything from Mark. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from...
They were pretty abbreviated.
They were, they were perfect.
Okay.
From 7:18 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. All right. Anything else, Joe, besides, before we get to raves and raves?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so do you want to start?
Yeah, I have. Just thinking about rave and my wake and help me well along with it. I'm going to have a rave at the Village Cafe. And it's kind of a, I'm not sure I should be picking businesses to, you know, point out. But the Village Cafe serves a purpose that a lot of other towns don't have. A place where people can gather and sit down. You know, you go next door to the next town, you can get coffee for sure, but there is no place really to sit down and just have breakfast, chat. And if you go up there, you go early in the morning and you meet the cranberry crowd. You go a little later and all of a sudden, it's the zumba or yoga crowd. And through the day, you can really interact with a lot of people. And so I would encourage people to go there and, you know, meet some of the neighbors. It's a, it's a nice thing that we have as a small community. That's my...
And good food, too.
Good food, awesome.
They do a really nice job and they're reasonably priced.
When I was interning at Soul Homestead, I got my lunch from Village Cafe almost every day. I love it there.
And they're very, they're very empathetic people.
Right.
They really are. So good for them.
Yeah, for good, yeah, that's very nice.
Good expedited.
Is it good expedited? All right, very good. All right, my rave is Joy Marvel and things that she's doing with the Council on Aging. That's fantastic. She's really, you know, making some progress and addressing some needs in this food pantry is fantastic. And I think anything we can do to help our seniors is a really great thing. And I would encourage anybody that wants to make donations to reach out to Joy and see what she needs, whether it be, I don't know if she takes financial donations to purchase food or whether it's food, but reach out to Joy and she can point you in the right direction of what you can do to help seniors in the town.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So with that being said, I don't think we have anything else, do we?
Mm-hmm. We okay, Bree?
Have we checked all the boxes?
We have.
I'm going to give you guys an A-plus.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will say we have a meeting next week. I believe Mark will be back. Then we've got quite a few meetings upcoming with bylaw review, townhouse communications meeting. We've got, I'm sure we'll have meetings with Bernie. We're going to have meetings with our fire candidates for the, their help to, with the fire EMS studies. So we've got a lot, a lot going on and a lot of good things happening in town. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.